I call this February 13th, 2018 zoning meeting of the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners to order. We will start with a silent invocation and a pledge of allegiance. I will lead that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements or additions or changes to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Casada, members of the board. We have a couple modifications to the agenda this afternoon. The first is a request on behalf of the applicant for Agenda Item Number, or Letter A. That is CO 2018 0001, CSU 2017 0031. We received a request on behalf of the applicant to defer this item to the April 10th zoning hearing in front of this commission. Staff accepts the request for deferral. Upon if the commission acquiesces, we would, we stand in favor of that. Both the appellants are here today if there's any questions.
Okay, so you want to remove... Are you removing something from the agenda?
Chairman Casada, yes. Agenda Item Number, or Letter A, rather, would be moved, and we would defer that to the April hearing in front of the zoning board.
Okay, so you're gonna defer A, the Planning and Development Services?
Right. That is an appeal.
On 5A?
That's correct, 5A.
Okay.
Move to deferral.
Alright, so we have a motion to deferral. And a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay. So, we're gonna go back to approval of minutes, unless you have anything further?
Chairman Casada, members of the board, you can move with the minutes. I do have a modification to some of the time limits required.
Okay, let's do that right now.
Okay, just very briefly, as you move forward with this, we do have a appeal of a conditional use approval by the Board of Adjustments, and that is followed by a number of variances, five altogether. In light of the fact that we have so many items on the agenda, staff has reached out to all parties involved who have filed appeals in either direction. And normally, for each appeal, the commission rules allow for a fairly lengthy presentation and rebuttal and staff presentation. But in light of the amount of time we have and the amount of items on the agenda, we've made a, we modified that agenda again with consent of all involved. I have placed that in front of your laptops, and we will use that as a guide. And the time, the time limits have been modified consistently with regards to everybody who was testifying. I just wanna make a very brief note that if you look at the Orange Agenda and you look at 5A, 5B, 5C, and so on, we changed the order slightly, so when you look at your agenda, that will reflect that change. So we will be using this today, and we'll be using those time limits. Having said that, that is the only other modification to the agenda.
Okay. We're good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so now I'll go back to the approval of minutes. So I move to approve November 28th, 2017 zoning minutes. I have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. All oppose, motion passes. We will now move forward to the appeals. Before we do that, let me read this. The next item on the agenda is appeals. For the first appeal is read Appeal Number, and the title is, that appears on the agenda. This is an appeal based on the evidence in record. Ordinarily, no new evidence will be accepted before the county commission. However, in the event that new evidence or testimony is accepted, the clerk will swear any witness who may testify concerning it. The order of presentation and time limits are set forth in the rules of procedure are the follows: Staff presentation, five minutes; Appellants, presentation, ten minutes; Opponents, presentation, fifteen minutes; Appellants, summation or rebuttal, five minutes; Staff closure, two minutes; Board discussion and question, and then action. Please be aware of the time limits for each side, appellants and opponents, and the total time allowed regardless of the number of persons signed up to speak. So each side will need to decide how to divide the total numbers amongst their speakers. Before each quasi judicial hearing, the following statement shall be read by the Chair: A) This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The commission- B) The commission is to act as judges of a particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. C) The commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties, and not any facts supposed by or may exist outside the proceedings. D) The commission is to act impartially towards each party, applying the law to the facts without favoritism or bias, or the mere desirability or of given, or any given result. E) A commissioner with a financial or family interest in the outcome of a quasi judicial proceeding should disclose any potential conflict in accordance with the rules, and should, if necessary, recuse himself or herself from the proceedings. F) The commission is rendering its decision should be, make a clear statement of what it believes to be the relevant facts and why those facts led it to, led it to its decision. Each commissioner shall avoid ex parte communications with parties bringing cases before the commission, however such communications that may have occurred by procedure started, stated in Rule Number Four. Okay? We will begin with staff presentation.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanna be clear, in this particular case, the parties have agreed to a different timeline than was just indicated, which is five minutes staff, five minute appellant, seven and a half minute opponent, two and a half minute appellant, and staff closure, two minutes, as opposed to the longer timelines. Yes.
Okay, so yeah, we'll go with this procedure. I just probably need you to read the rest of that. And so now we will move forward with Item 5E?
That's correct. Good evening, excuse me, good afternoon, Chairman Casada, members of the county commission. My name is Nicholas Hamm. I am the zoning administrator for Burnaleo County, and I have the honor of serving as your tour guide this afternoon for Agenda Items B through G. As Chairman Casada has indicated, we are going to hear now Agenda Item 5E. This is COA 2018 0005, which is an appeal of BA 2018 001, which was an appeal of ZA 2017 0198. What we're considering today is an appeal of an approval of a conditional use permit to allow apartments. The property, the subject property is located at 705, 707, and 711 Bridge Boulevard Southwest, located at Bridge in the Attrisco Riverside train. So the first property you'd see entering the South Valley along Bridge. The property is owned SDI VC. It's located in the Gateway Village Center of the Isleta Boulevard and Village Center Sector Development Plan. These village centers, they're existing activity centers that were recognized by the sector plan. The VC zone is comparable to the county C1 zoning, allowing for a variety of office, retail, and service type uses, and it does recognize conditional uses, or excuse me, recognizes apartments as a conditional use emanating from that zone. Just to review, a conditional use is defined in the county zoning code as a use that is expected to occur in any given zone, and they are tailored to each specific zoning category. So one could expect conditional uses like commercial stables in the A1 zone, but in things that are more higher up in the intensity tree, like the VC zone, you could expect things like apartments to occur. The approval of a conditional use permit is not a zone change. It's not subject to Resolution 11686, though it's important to say that this specific property has been subject to criteria as adopted in Resolution 11686 through the plan adoption in 2008 and the sector plan amendment to exclude the additional parcels that this board heard in late 2017. There were no appeals of either of those actions. The adoption of the plan, the approval of the plan amendment, sets the stage for the project that we have before us today. The, the criteria for a conditional use approval is borne out of Section 24 of the county zoning code, and there are three. The first is that a property be adequate in size and shape to accommodate such use. The second is that the property can be developed in such manner that undue traffic hazards or congestion will not be created. And the third is that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the neighborhood or seriously conflict with the character of the area. Prior to the Board of Adjustment hearing, that was an appeal of my determination, I convened two public hearings for this project in October and November, and as I mentioned, we had a Board of Adjustment hearing in January. The conditional use permit was considered by the zoning administrator only the November hearing. So the applicant originally applied for a set of variances that we're gonna hear later this evening. Through the original hearing process, it was determined in the interest of transparency and consistency with the plan that we needed to have them also apply for a conditional use permit for apartments. So on to the determination. With regard to the first criteria, that the property be adequate in size and shape, as I mentioned, the property owner did apply for four separate variances and associated with this requested use. Those were heard at October, November 2017 ZA hearings, and they were to adjust the layout and design of the property. And through the ZAs review of the applications, I would determine that the property was adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, with modifications allowed by the variance process. And the variances that were approved only adjust minimum standards to an extent necessary to allow reasonable use. They are not unlimited. They don't remove any minimum standard entirely. With regard to the second criteria, that any undue traffic hazards or congestions not be created, testimony from the applicant and public works staff detailed an ongoing conversation about the, the required infrastructure improvements that would be necessitated by this, this particular project. The applicant testified they are willing and able to provide infrastructure as determined by Public Works, and Public Works staff testified that with improvements, undue traffic hazards or congestions would not occur. A condition of approval was imposed on the approval that any improvements required by county Public Works would be provided as part of this building permit process, and I think it's important just to remember that all uses generate traffic. What we're considering here is whether or not this particular use generates undue amounts of traffic, and it's been indicated by Public Works staff that permissive uses of this zone would indeed allow for higher intensity traffic than what would occur as expected with a multifamily project like this. So my determination was it was not undue, not undue traffic, and that it was located on a commercial corridor where we have traffic expected, and it's designed and accounted for. With regard to the third criteria, the character of the area, the Isleta Boulevard and Bridge corridor has a variety of uses, commercial, residential, mixture of the two. There are commercial businesses in close proximity. There are properties with multiple single-family dwellings directly across the street from this property. There's a small trailer court. There are other duplexes in the airway and orchard garden neighborhoods. So there is a pattern of commercial and multifamily type development in this area. And I determined that this would be consistent with the area, and that it would serve as a nice transition from a high-traffic corridor into the urban residential environment. I think it's important to note that this is the only village center in the sector plan that is designated, established urban by the comprehensive plan. That's the highest density designation in the comprehensive plan. So the ZA, I approved the request with eight findings of fact, five conditions of approval, one of them requiring that they meet Public Works requirements, also that they meet the requirements of the sector plan and the design guidelines. The Board of Adjustment upheld this determination. So this appeal, or excuse me, approval of the request would allow for a blighted property to be redeveloped, and my recommendation is that we deny this appeal thereby upholding the determination of both the Board of Adjustment and myself as the zoning administrator. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Any comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will go to the appellants.
My name is Scott Newland. I live at 1280 Sunset Southwest. My view is that the zoning administrator erred when granting the conditional use permit for high-density apartments on this project, and they erred for a number of reasons. First and foremost, among these reasons is traffic. As anyone who lives or visits the South Valley knows, traffic along Bridge from I-25 West to Gulf Southwest is a mess. It is not unusual to spend thirty minutes creeping along the I-25 exit ramp to the intersection of Bridge and Isleta. The crux of this journey is the intersection at Bridge and La Vega, exactly where this project would have its entrance. Although, as the ZA said in the BOA meeting on January 3rd and just now, "All development creates traffic," the current traffic situation was ignored. The impact of this development and its entrance, is this thing? The impact of this development and its entrance and egress, there's a picture of some of the traffic you face typically on any day, of the current traffic jam needs to be known and considered before the project forward, the project moves forward. The zoning administrator erred when they deferred the traffic study to a later point in the project's development. One of our proposals is that the, the traffic study happened before the project moves forward. Secondly, the ZA erred when granting the conditional use permit when they failed to consider the utter lack of transition from the unbuilt to the built environment as one travels west across the bridge, passing, passing from the river to the Bosque to the three-story high-density apartment complex which is proposed. Contrary to what the development, developer stated in their appeal, the BOA's denial of the height variance, the project we are, we are considering today is much closer to the Bosque than any of the other examples similar, they give as similar. The apartments on Poco Loco here are more than 400 feet from the Bosque, and there's a road in between. The apartments, just up the road on, the beach apartments by Tingly are more than 300 feet from the edge of the Bosque, and there's a road in between. The proposal here is less than 125 feet from the Bosque, and there's no road in between. Approving this sort of high-density project, housing project will set a precedent for the entire River Valley. It will open the door for other high-density housing projects to go in immediately upon the drain, immediately adjacent to the Bosque. The Rio Grande and its Bosque are our county's great treasure. The health and welfare of it and our fellow citizens require us to act cautiously with regards to proposals that encroach upon it. This apartment complex does just that. Thirdly, the ZA erred when granting the height, parking, and setback variances. As the BOA chairperson Chavez stated in the hearing on January 3rd regarding the project, it's too big. Indeed, it is too big. That's why it needs to go back several feet closer to the river. That's why it needs to go back up another story, and that's why it needed fewer than the required parking spaces. These are things you'll hear about later. This project is out of scale. It doesn't fit the space. It's too big. Finally, the ZA erred when granting the conditional use and the variances by failing to consider fully the place itself. The ZA did review and refer to the Isleta Plan and the Main Street Plan for support of their decision. Contrary to what one of the developers said in the BOA hearing in January, however, the place of this development does have historical significance. Many descriptions of the South Valley extol its history and culture. However, most leave mention of the specific places, the houses, the roads, the plazas, the pueblos, the fields, the families, the ditches, and the geographical features of the South Valley that are not just remnants, but are in fact the living culture and the persisting embodiment of that history and culture. This disappearing of what came before is regrettable. It impoverishes and weakens our community. As many of you know, the bridge on Bridge Street sits at an ancient ford of the Rio Grande. When the Spaniards entered the Rio Grande Valley, the native people were crossing the river at this very place. The Camino Real crossed the river here, as did Route 66 when it went through the South Valley. Unfortunately, there's no marker or indication of the significance of this anywhere. The planned high-density apartment development would further erase the meaning of this crossing has had for thousands of people for hundreds of years. Failing to consider what this place is and has been for many generations allowed the ZA to believe the apartments to be a reasonable use of property, but it is not a reasonable use because it disregards the historical, cultural, and geographical context of the place. The property owners have a right to develop their property, and I share appellant Mr. Lovato's interest in living in a safe neighborhood, but this is not some property along some small little lane deep in the valley away from almost everyone. This place is passed daily by thousands of people. Thousands of Burnaleo County citizens have an interest in how this property is developed. These interests in their own and the collective health, safety, and general welfare mitigate against undeveloped, unfettered development rights. This high-development apartment project will have a negative impact on an already bad traffic situation. It designs lacks any consideration of transition from the well Bosque to the built environment. The scale of the project is completely out of character with the community and the neighborhood, and it represents and will stand as an historical, cultural, and geographical devaluation of this important place. Any questions?
Do you have any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Opponents?
Do we need to, all, get all of us at once? Is that possible? So we can just roll through?
Sure. So, do we, we don't have to swear on it?
Not unless this is new testimony.
No.
I think, I think everybody's sworn.
That's already, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. I misunderstood. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Jim Stroger, and here today to speak about this appeal and opposition to this appeal. As stated by Mr. Hamm, I think he went very clearly and concisely through his analysis that he went through as, in his role as the zoning administrator. And I don't think in, in light of the testimony that was heard both at the Board of Adjustments and just now from the, from the appellants, I think it's clear that they have not met their, their burden to demonstrate that both in the original decision that the zoning administrator made a mistake, nor did the Board of Adjustment make a mistake in this case. They acted appropriately. And I think his, his testimony provides very clear direction on that. The original application provided factual evidence to support the conditional use. This application was reviewed by county staff, Mr. Hamm, in his capacity as zoning administrator. He held two public hearings, as he indicated, took testimony at those hearings, and then based on the criteria for conditional use, approved the request as applied for. In these, in the appeal of the ZAs decision, the appellants also provide evidence to support their, their claim that the ZA made a mistake, that he erred in his original decision. The Board of Adjustment correctly found that the ZA acted correctly and followed the rules, and correctly applied the zoning, the county's plans and policies. One of the things that I wanted to address was the fact that when we look at these, these questions and these decisions, we have to look at it in a couple of contexts. One is to look at the actual site and whether or not the proposed use would be injurious as Mr. Hamm went through with regard to traffic and with regard to intensity of development. We also have to look at this in the context, and I think this is another area where the zoning administrator correctly applied his, his job, basically, is to look at this in the context of the existing zoning, which this body approved, and the plans that this body approved that set the stage for what the county thinks ought to happen here. And once again, when you look at it in that context, I think it's clear that he did not err in his decision that this conditional use is appropriate in this location. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Charles Joslin. He's the Housing Development Manager with the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. I just think it would be important to share a little bit about who we are as an organization so you understand exactly who we are, what we do, and what type of development this will be for the South Valley. We have, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). We have built 279 units since 2012, and currently we have 107 units under construction. We have a variety of federal funds. We use tax credits. We have relationships with major financial institutes. As of yesterday, we submitted to the MFA for our funding of $10.5 million to develop this project and direct investment into the South Valley. We develop in, hopefully, it's not there, but it'd be nice to show you a few of our previous developments so you have an understanding of the quality of construction that we do. We develop in Trumbull Neighborhood, Wells Park, Santa Barbara, Martinez Town. We build affordable housing for families, seniors, those with special needs. Our funding sources, excuse me, our funding sources requires yearly tenant and property inspection. We use high-quality building materials, energy star appliances. Our last two developments were LEED Platinum certified. We, our developments contain community space, conference room, data centers, exercise room. One of our developments, Plaza Fleece, has actually a child learning center there, a daycare. Our third-party management team checks, does employment checks, background checks, credit checks. We have an onsite manager and a full-time maintenance staff. Residents do not pay more than 30% of their income per month on rent. Our financing also requires us to provide social services at no cost to our residents, things like health screenings, nutritional education, credit and financial training, after-school tutoring, GED training classes, job training and resume building, computer training, self-defense, CPR. We have a relationship with the Road Runner Food Pantry, and we deliver fresh produce every two weeks and dry and canned goods once a month to our residents at no cost to them. This has immediate impact on the neighbors. Kind of frog in my throat. We have numerous partners throughout the city of Albuquerque that help deliver these social services. This is our first development in Burnaleo County, so we are creating new partnerships and relationships with local organizations and nonprofits. This is the proposed development on Bridge. Fifty units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom for families with household, households with families. Also forty-three, 5,300 square feet of commercial, retail, office, and restaurant. There's Class A commercial space that is currently lacking down the Bridge Boulevard Corridor. We have an onsite manager's office and maintenance staff. There will be a data center, community space, conference room, and play areas for children. Social services again will be provided, and we have space for a food pantry to provide food at no cost to our residents that live there. The architect is here, and he will be able to discuss a little bit more detail of what that development is included. But I also wanted to share with you the outreach through the community that we've done over the last 12 to 14 months. We've had numerous meetings with planning and zoning, with Public Works to help coordinate their Bridge Boulevard improvements with our development. We've met with the Housing Authority, Economic Development, and the record states that this application was distributed to a variety of Burnco agencies for comment. No adverse comments were provided regarding these requests. Also done neighborhood and organizational outreach. We've met with the Main Street Organization twice, the Economic Development Center multiple times. We had a design charrette, two design charrettes, one for the commercial, one for the community. Community Health Source Quarterly Meeting, Catholic Charities, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Cultural Center, Barellis Main Street. Our MAP amendment included, that went out to the South Valley Alliance, Southwest Alliance of Neighborhoods, Barellis Community Coalition. I personally have met with individuals of the community and actually given them tours of our existing properties. The Vicino's del Bosque Neighborhood Association. I guarantee this project was not a secret, that we did what we could over the last year. And finally, with the South Valley Coalition and Neighborhood Associations, I would like to briefly bring up the President, Mr. Rod Mahoney.
May I have a few moments? Okay, thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to the letter I actually submitted into the record. The South Valley Coalition has been on board with this from the very beginning. It's about, it's been about 14 months. We've submitted testimony and actually letters of support from the very beginning through this process, and I would just like to say here, and I'll read this to you, "We believe that this proposal appropriately addresses and fulfills the many needs of the Bridge Boulevard Corridor Plan, which has overlapped within this area, which was approved in 2013. This particular unique site was identified in the bridge renovation plan, which cited the need for mixed-use development and to enable economic development in this area in the village center." This proposed- This proposed plan would create a new and well-managed affordable housing complex with a variety of commercial sites for both startup and legacy businesses, thus establishing a commercial destination immediately across the river. The balance of mixed uses would inject a significant number of new customers, but actually our residents of the area, to, to actually infuse economic stability in this challenged area that's been challenged for decades. We also believe that the proposed three-story configuration is the better option for this location. When considering the concerns and the respect for the adjacent property owners, this project would clearly mark a new beginning for this location. And the property, as we've described, is the first property that you view when you cross the river. So when you cross the river going west, what you see is this negative blemish on the image of the South Valley. Certainly, for decades, I have crossed this river going to the east side for employment, and certainly it has degraded, it's degraded the image of the South Valley for decades. Certainly, the renewal of this particular area, I think, will be a new beginning to actually turn that image around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Scott Nuland again. First of all, if, if you came here opposed to this project, would you raise your hand, please? Thanks for coming. I want to acknowledge the need for affordable housing in the South Valley, and I also want to acknowledge the rights of private property owners to develop their property in a manner that meets their needs and wants as it conforms to the codes and regulations that are applicable. And finally, I want to acknowledge also the dilemma Mr. Steve Lovato, the neighbor of this property, faces. Nobody wants to live in an area next to a dangerous, an area where dangerous, perhaps illegal, activities are taking place. Contrary to what the gentleman, one of the gentlemen spoke just a moment ago, said, the, this project in fact would be, the, building this project on this site would be injurious. It would be injurious to the people who live nearby, the people who pass by each day, and it would be injurious to the river and the Bosque. I want to say that if these project developers would be interested in developing affordable housing further west on Bridge, for example, at Bridge and Five Points, we would support such, such a plan. I'm a founder and a member, an officer of the Sunset Southwest Neighborhood Association, and I know our Neighborhood Association would love to see affordable housing at the Five Points intersection. The key difference between the two places, this place, the project that we're considering, and Five Points, is that the intersection is already robust enough to handle additional traffic, and there are also already large buildings in place there, so new affordable housing would not have such a dissonant impact on the surrounding area. Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Closure?
Chairman Casada, members of the board, just to address a couple of items that were brought up during the presentations you just heard, there is a, uh, operations and maintenance road and an engineered drainage channel owned by the Conservancy District between the subject property and the, the Bosque proper. So there is, there is a built-in buffer of a, a road and an engineered structure between those two properties. The, the plan identifies these activity centers as an F, in an effort to protect the rural riparian areas. So by designating activity centers and village centers where this type of development can occur, it promotes that type of development to occur in these areas and, and not in the very rural agricultural areas of the South Valley. So it will foster protection of those native sort of agricultural-type uses. As Mr. Nuland accurately pointed out, this is a high-traffic corridor. We do expect high-traffic uses to occur. As I stated previously in my presentation, the list of permissive uses, uses that don't require review by the zoning administrator and go straight to building permit, would have the potential to generate higher traffic counts than the subject project before you today. With that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have for me.
Any questions? None? Thank you. All of the outside, Commissioner?
Thank you. Do you have a site plan that you can put up?
Commissioner O'Malley, excuse me, Commissioner, Chairman Casada, Commissioner O'Malley, I have a, this image is of the parcel itself. I don't have a, a site plan myself. I believe that maybe the private architect or the applicant might-
Could you bring that up, please?
What is the total acreage of this site, call combined, those pieces?
This is off the top of my head, but it's, it's approximately 2.7. 2.5, excuse me.
2.5 acres. And are, so, if you could describe this for me, so all the apartments shows different buildings, are they different levels, or is it all, are all of the buildings two, three-story?
Chairman Casada, Commissioner, the, excuse me, the, the retail residential, the retail commercial uses are going to occur in this area. I hope you can see what I'm pointing to here. The, the bulk of the residential use is going to occur along this area of the property. The request for variance was to allow some of this area to be constructed at a 38-foot height, as opposed to the permissive height of 26 feet. I'll introduce that as part of the variances that you're going to hear subsequent, but the, the massing of the building will be as far east as the applicant could fit that, and the, the, the uses facing the bridge corridor will be the retail and commercial with the residential on top of that, and then most of the residential use is occurring in this area here.
What is the total height of the buildings that have the retail at the bottom and the-
Twenty-six, correct.
Those are two stories. But, but the units behind, which are all the apartment units, those are three-story units?
Those, the, the proposal and the, the approval of variance would allow that portion of the structure to be constructed at 38 feet.
How many total units are there?
The application that was considered by myself would be for 50 residential units.
Fifty. Okay. Is there any kind of variance in that? I mean, so what about the articulation of the buildings, for example? Is there, is there much articulation? Can somebody speak to that?
Could you come up here, please? My name is Alexander DeZurich. I'm the project architect. And so to give you a quick idea of the massing of the project, let me go through my paperwork, which I believe will answer your questions, Commissioner O'Malley. Okay. Here's a, here's a three-dimensional representation of the project. This is Bridge Boulevard. This is the Bosque. The riverside drain is, is located to the east of the property. Orchard Gardens Road, La Vega Drive with a, with a signalized intersection at Bridge Boulevard. We are looking at two-story masses for ground-level retail with one-story residential above. We've got a leasing office on the ground level in this block here, also with one story above. And then we have three-story masses going along the Bosque, which does include the corner piece, which has a rest, we're proposing a restaurant component on the ground level.
What is the articulation as you, for example, you're crossing the, the river and you see these buildings from the back end or, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, the articulation of the actual buildings for the, you know?
Sure, of course. So this is a photograph of the existing site right now. Essentially, right as you cross over Bridge Boulevard. We're on the opposite side of Bridge, looking towards the property. This is the blighted and abandoned motel on the right-hand side here. The Bosque is just off the page to your right. These are existing vacated commercial spaces, and there's one occupied commercial space in the property. Okay? There's a laundromat there, and it kind of doglegs around that laundromat. This is what the proposed articulation of the building will be coming across Bridge Boulevard as a before and after shot.
This is off, this is on Bridge?
You're traveling on Bridge. These cars are on Bridge Boulevard. This would be a median right here.
Okay. And then, so the, the height is 26 feet?
The height is 38 feet at this point, and then we step down to 26 feet to correspond with the neighboring one- and two-story commercial projects, or commercial properties that are further down Bridge Boulevard. It's important to note that there is a Bosque with three, four-story-high trees that effectively screens this, this building from traffic on Bridge Boulevard until you get up to this vantage point, and you're coming down from an elevated portion on Bridge Boulevard. So you effectively have a two-story building until you get down to the ground level, once the bridge has, has met the ground, has met grade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any more discussion, any more questions? No? Okay, so I think this is an action item. Action item five E. Do I have a-
Mr. Chairman, I move we deny the appeal and uphold the Board of Adjustment's decision.
So we got a motion and a second to deny the appeal. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion is denied. Let's go to item five B.
All right. Good afternoon again, Chairman Casada, members of the board. Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for Burnaleo County. Moving on to agenda, item five B. This is an appeal of an approval of a variance for the required parking spaces. So the, the context of the project is the same. I'll, I'll spare you going into that again, but I will jump right into the criteria for a variance approval. The criteria for a variance approval before the zoning administrator is that the applicant demonstrate peculiar, unusual, or exceptional circumstances in connection with a specific parcel of land, circumstances that are not generally found within the locality or neighborhood concerned. The zoning administrator, through powers vested in Section 24 of the zoning code, can grant variances to an extent necessary to permit an owner reasonable use of their land. Variances can be granted from height, area, parking, density, et cetera. Through the, the hearing process and the evidence in the record, the zoning administrator determined that the property was peculiar, unusual, and exceptional in a number of ways, but most certainly it is peculiar with regard to the shape, creating challenges for the site design for any use, be it, excuse me, permissive or conditional. And that can be evidenced by a copy of the proposed plat. Julie, would you mind showing that? Thank you. As you can see here, it does have a peculiar shape. As it, as it bends towards the back of the property, it does narrow to a point, effectively creating a, a very challenging area for any type of use to occur in that zone. So the quick acid test for a variance is whether or not there are other properties like it in the immediate vicinity. There are, there are none that are like this. So the, this is genuinely an unusual or peculiar piece of property. With that in mind, the, my determination was that I approved a variance in this regard for production in the required parking spaces. So the variance is a 41 to the minimum 134 spaces, calculated in accordance with the sector development plan ratio requirement. So that sounds a little bit more drastic than it is, and I'll explain that. The, the zoning code straight calculation for dwelling units is two per dwelling unit. So we're going to provide 1.88 per dwelling unit if we were to approve the variance in the way that it was presented today. The sector plan allows for shared parking areas. It allows for uses of different types to share parking, so you can use 60% of parking that is calculated for one type of use. That can be contributed to another type of use. So if we're looking at just the commercial aspect, there is an abundance of parking for the commercial space, and the variance allows for a reduction of what would be 100 spaces if we just use the straight zoning code criteria, we're going to reduce that by six parking spaces. The plan also has, it encourages reduced parking areas, it promotes pedestrian and public transit, it has a maximum parking area requirement, which is peculiar with regard to zoning regulations. What it wants to do is to reduce parking areas so we don't have large paved areas along the corridor. As I mentioned, the property is peculiar, unusual, exceptional. I did grant the variance to an extent necessary to allow reasonable use, and that would be the approval of a variance of 41 parking spaces to the required 134. In the opponent's presentation, they're going to mention that the number changed from original advertisement to what we're considering today, and that was intentional and by design. The original application used the number that was calculated by the applicant in the way that they felt was most appropriate. The subsequent advertisement was a calculation done by myself as the zoning administrator, and that was to, to be consistent with the requirements of the plan itself. So the variance request started at a number that was then changed through the hearing process, through receipt of additional information, to be able to more accurately calculate that requirement. So my recommendation is denial of this appeal, thereby upholding the termination of both the Board of Adjustment and the zoning administrator. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you.
And then Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, some questions. So just for the apartments alone, which is 50 units, it's a total of 50 units apartments, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and including the commercial, you're saying that there's going to be a total of 41 parking spaces for the entire development?
Chairman Casada, Commissioner O'Malley, there will be a total of 94 parking spaces.
Okay.
The 41 figure is the, is the reduction from the required 134, and that's arrived to by the ratio as provided in the sector development plan. So in the sector development plan, it's just a ratio. It just says X amount of square feet, you provide this many parking spaces. In the zoning code, just the straight zoning code, there are more detailed parking calculations, and there's a separate one for retail, commercial-type uses. There's a separate calculation for just residential dwelling units. The dwelling unit calculation requires that there be two per dwelling.
Okay. All right. So there's, so the, the total requirement was, you said, 100 and-
If we just use-
If you just use-
Just use square footage.
Right.
134 would be the required parking.
Okay. And now you've reduced it to 90, 94.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're assuming that there's, when people leave or whatever, there's, there's places for people to park in the commercial areas.
Chairman Casada, Commissioner O'Malley, the, the, is let a Village Center plan, it's a, it's a multimodal plan. It does encourage public transit, you know, pedestrian options, utilization of the county's open space and trails network. So it does, it does want for different types of transportation options to be utilized.
I, I missed her. I thought you said that you just cut it down to 43 parking spaces.
My apologies if I was unclear there.
So I was like, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the appellant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Rob Luitheiser. I live at 1550 Yakima Southwest. It's just south of Five Points, about a mile from the project site. I am the president of the Yakima Neighborhood Association, and not only am I speaking in that capacity, but I did poll the neighborhood, and everybody I spoke to is supportive of this appeal, and so I'm speaking for members of the association. We are appealing the Board of Adjustment's decision to allow the reducing of the number of required spaces by 41, and that's a 30% reduction. The resultant on-street parking will incur broader social costs by contributing to the traffic congestion and safety hazards, and also adversely affecting the adjacent neighborhood. I feel that the zoning administrator erred by granting the waiver because they did not explicitly address these off-site impacts. If I could, this, excuse me, this is a planned view prepared by the applicant, and I overlaid where the additional parking, the 41 parking spaces, would have to be accommodated. Now, I understand it would be at peak use, however, there would be needed off-site parking. There's room for about 10 spaces along Bridge Boulevard. The other overflow, when all of this parking is full, and we would expect it to be full, would have to be shunted down to Orchard Way down here. This is what the space looks like on Bridge Boulevard, where the parking would have to occur. This is looking east towards the bridge over the river. This is the area down Orchard Garden Road where the parking, again, the extra parking or the needed parking would have to be accommodated. Bridge Boulevard's bridge across the Rio Grande, it's no secret, is to the immediate east of the project site and is one of the five metropolitan river crossings. It is the primary east-west artery for the upper part of the South Valley, and as such is really busy, and we all know that. The parking on Bridge Boulevard that would necessarily occur here, and if we could leave this on, would create public safety hazards, especially during the very congested afternoon commute. This is looking to the west with the project area over here. This is looking east with the project area here. We're bumper-to-bumper, and I think anybody who's used this area understands that. This would create a public safety hazard by people simply getting in and out of their vehicles very close to the heavy traffic. A similar situation exists to the west- A similar situation exists to the west. This is just a block to the west, and you can see the proximity of the traffic to the parked vehicles. I have parked there, and I have been fearful getting out of my car. Additionally, parking along Bridge Boulevard would interfere, directly interfere with one of the authorized bike trails in the county city system. This is the project site. This is a designated bike trail. There's a bike lane there. Parking would occur within that lane. It would be a hazard, it would be a public safety hazard for bicyclists to have to negotiate the cars. Again, I understand this hazard. I've been there and have been fearful. Bridge Boulevard parking would also contribute to traffic congestion. Parallel parking, the act of parking or getting out, would back up traffic, and the interference with the westbound ABQ ride is twenty-five feet away. Currently, that bus uses this empty space to merge into the traffic. That would no longer be available to them during light traffic during those few hours during the day. It wouldn't be an issue during the other hours. It would be a very severe issue. On Orchard Garden, again, this area, and I'm almost out of here. This would adversely affect the quality of life and character of the neighborhood. The parking would create additional traffic and congestion necessarily, and potentially create a public safety issue associated with after-dark and overnight parking, which could be expected with, from the apartments on this residential street that has no streetlights. The parking variance, in conclusion, along with the other variances, reflects that this high-density residential-commercial proposal is not suited to this site, and we respectfully ask that you honor this appeal. We remain committed to work with the owner and his agents to get an appropriate development for this site. We find this to be inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Appellants? Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
So, just a couple of things on what he said. This park, the parking here is...
State your name for the record again.
Hi, I'm Charles Jocelyn with the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. The parking that's already proposed here, that's not a part of our development. That's an existing plan and design for the redevelopment of the Bridge Boulevard corridor. That's going to occur with or without the development, that type of parking. So, I just wanted to be clear, that's not a part of ours. We're working with public works to have a comprehensive development, but parallel parking is proposed here, as well as enhancing the existing bike trail. So, that's a way to actually protect the residents along this part of the corridor. It's actually having parking next to the pedestrian along the street trees is actually safer for the people of the sidewalk. Also, just want to do, you know, one way that you reduce request congestion and overall parking requirements is by creating places that you can work, eat, live, and recreate at, all in one. Walking distance to the public amenities and more pedestrian environment, that's what we're trying to create here. The property has great access to public transit. It's a hundred feet from the front of our property is a bus route. And also, we know our clients. We know the clientele of those who use affordable housing. It doesn't matter if they live in an efficiency or a three-bedroom. They typically have one car, and that's why we are proposing one parking spot per unit. They rely on mass transit, for the most part. So, I just think that's important. And within the Bridge Boulevard corridor, you know, there is an overlap of the Isleta Sector Plan and the Bridge Boulevard corridor. We are in the Gateway Village Center, and that promotes one parking space per unit, and a twenty percent reduction if located within a thousand feet. And like I said, we're about a hundred feet from the bus stop.
Alexander Dzerick, if it pleases the commission, we would actually like to address our design process and several of the other variance requests right now, because they're all interrelated due to the unique and exceptional nature of the site. May I proceed with your permission? Okay, thank you very much. So, as was stated earlier, this is indeed a unique, exceptional, and unusual site. All right? This is how the, this is how the county code actually looks at setbacks on the site. This is Orchard Gardens Road. It actually thinks that this is the front door, and then this is the backyard. All right? The way that we believe is a more common sense way of looking at the setbacks on the site is making this the front door, this the side yard, and then actually providing more of a buffer to Mr. Lovato and the neighborhood directly adjacent to this property. We think that that makes the most sense, given that Bridge Boulevard is indeed a commercial thoroughfare, and we're proposing commercial businesses there. So, in looking at how we might lay out the site, and this does affect parking, as well as a few other items, we looked at several ways of doing it. First, we looked at all two-story option, which would include a very oddly-shaped parking lot in here, very difficult for emergency vehicles to access, and would put a two-story building directly next to Mr. Lovato's property, and effectively looking down into his property. We then looked at another option that would put a two-story building directly on Orchard Gardens Drive, which would effectively block the view shed of the neighbors across here, and still have a two-story building located very close to Mr. Lovato's drive, also a very weird-shaped parking lot with not very much landscape left over for our residents. The final configuration that we ended up with was one that we believe is a much more common sense and straightforward way of looking at this unusual property. Consolidating all the parking to the rectangular portion of the site, aligning with an intersection, with a lighted intersection, rather, and then, as discussed earlier, looking at the three-story block, not as a way of increasing density or height or blocking views, but really trying to push the building as far away from the neighboring properties as possible to give them as much privacy and buffer as possible. So, in regards to the, so in regards to the parking, as was already discussed, we believe that locating commercial park, sorry, the commercial space parking within our parking lot, having essentially overflow on the proposed streetscape improvements seems to make the most sense, and going on other experience from similar housing projects, we believe we've well accounted for the parking on the property. With that, I could stand for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Staff closure.
We have an appellant rebuttal.
Oh, yeah, okay, the rebuttal, yeah, I'm sorry. And closure, if you want to put it together.
Thank you, and plus I have to return the figures that I took. Acknowledging what was said, the expecting the need for one parking spot per unit for quote-unquote "this kind of development" is a little troublesome. To the west of the project, there are several other, I think, similar apartment buildings, and they have in excess of two parking spaces per unit. This is La Villa, La Via Allegra, and Rancho de Paez, and also Pueblo de Paez, Del Paez, all have in excess of two parking spots per unit. The bus service, yes, it is immediately there. The bus service is also immediately available to these other apartment buildings, and we must understand, too, the bus service routes fifty-three and fifty-four, which I have taken fifty-four several, many times, not, it's limited services as compared to the rest of Albuquerque. It's queue forty-five minutes. Other places in Albuquerque, buses come twenty to thirty minutes. It's on an hourly basis on Saturday, and no service on Sunday. So, I don't want those facts to be overplayed. I would respectfully suggest, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that you do request a traffic study, which would include the impacts of the on-street parking prior to approval. Mr. Hamm has said that in the January third meeting, he supported the ongoing studies that would be done by staff, some sort of preliminary analysis and an impact study after the permits are issued. I would suggest it is an issue. It's an issue to the entire county, being one of five crossings, that that study gets completed prior to approvals. It only makes sense. I thank you again for your time and forbearance of my stumblings.
Thank you.
Okay, Chairman Casado, members of the board, just to address a couple items related to presentations you heard today, there are, or excuse me, there is not access from the subject property to Orchard Gardens, so the presumption that parking would occur on Orchard Gardens, I think, is unfounded. There's not direct access from this project onto that residential street. In speaking with our transportation planner, his, in his experience, it's most, multifamily uses are lower generating traffic uses compared to the types of uses that can occur here. In his experiences, it's usually closer to one and a half spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily-type uses, so if we're looking at through that context, we've got a little extra parking. And I think it's important to remember the criteria for variance approval. It's just that the subject parcel be peculiar, unusual, or exceptional. I think that in itself is an indisputable fact. This property is unusual. It has a peculiar shape. It does have challenges with regard to siding, any type of use on that property. And with that, I'm sorry, one last thing. There will be improvements to the Bridge Boulevard streetscape. That would be part of the building permit process. Public Works will require that, and there also will be traffic studies as part of the building permit process. And again, the requirement of the conditional use approval is that the applicant provide infrastructure as required by county public works, so that's built into this process. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is ninety-six spots, correct, or parking spaces?
Chairman Casado, Commissioner Johnson, ninety-four.
Ninety-four, sorry. So, ninety-four spaces on the lot. Has nothing to do with any on-street parking or anything like that.
That's correct.
Commercial operations at the site, what are anticipated for uses there?
As far as the type of uses?
Yeah, well, no, hours of operation.
Chairman Casado, Commissioner Johnson, I don't think that I'm adequately equipped to answer that.
Business hours and types of businesses you're looking at?
I think it depends on what kind of businesses are in there.
Typically, while the commercial space is open, our residents are at work, so that...
That was kind of what I was getting at. So, they can share that parking without considerable stress on either parking or commercial or residential uses.
And the commercial spaces typically, it's maintenance, it's the manager's office, that's open eight to five. So, there's not really much overlap between the commercial space and the residential space.
So, that ninety-six during the evening hours is available for all the residents?
Absolutely.
And so, that's more than one per...
Yes, it is.
Dwelling unit, correct?
Yes, it is.
Well, even I can do that math, so, at fifty, so, what does that end up being? Did you say one point eight, ninety-four spaces?
Chairman Casado, Commissioner Johnson, one point eight eight is the net ratio of one point eight eight spaces per dwelling unit as proposed under this...
And that should accommodate comfortably both residents and potential visitors?
My understanding is that, yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Well, this, I guess, would be for the gap, if you wouldn't mind asking a quick... So, the apartment units, you'd mentioned that no more than thirty percent of the income would be more for housing, which is a safe number, I think, for pretty much anybody. What is, so, are these, all these units, sixty percent are below the median income? What are they?
So, the majority of them are fifty percent AMI. We have three units at thirty percent AMI, and three units at sixty percent AMI.
Okay, so it's fifty percent is the majority.
Majority, yes.
Thank you.
Staff closures? Are you done there?
Chairman Casado, I believe I'm done.
So, we have any more questions?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to move that we deny the appeal.
So, I got a motion to deny the appeal?
Second.
And a second? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is denied. We're moving on to item five F.
All right. Chairman Casado, members of the board, my name is Nicholas Hamm. I'm the zoning administrator for Burnley County. I'm here to present to you agenda, item five F. This is an appeal of an approval of a variance for a rear yard setback. Let me just get to my notes here, apologies. This is a requested variance of fifteen feet to the maximum required rear yard setback, and that's along, that would be both along the existing footprint of the structures that are there now, and that occurs along the Riverside Drain Side. So, as was mentioned previously in discussions today, the county zoning code defines the front of this lot as the narrow portion abutting a street, so the front is actually facing west. The rear setback would be measured from the property line against the drain. So, the applicant is requesting that the variance be granted to allow the buildings to be moved closer to the drain, furthest from the existing residential users. It would be up against the Engineered Operations and Maintenance Road and the Adrisco Riverside Drain Channel. It would allow for a more effective use of a portion of the property that bends and narrows to a point, and as I've explained previously, the property is peculiar, unusual, and exceptional, and thereby I would recommend that the board deny this request for appeal, and thereby uphold the decision of the zoning administrator and the Board of Adjustment. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
No questions? Okay, thanks. So, that's your presentation at that? That's pretty simple. Okay, moving on to the appellant's presentation, please.
Scott Nuland again. The rear yard setback variance allows the development to further encroach upon the Bosque. Moving this high-density development closer to the Bosque would diminish, if possible, the already nonexistent transition from the natural to the built environment crossing the river to the west. There would be nothing between the three-story building and the Bosque other than the Adrisco Drain, and with that, I defer to Sarah Wadis.
My name is Sarah Newton-Wadis, nine thirty-three Nashville Southwest. This is more than variances. It's a permanent change to the historic entrance of the South Valley. Once you go here, you can't go back, and it will change the South Valley forever. I have a couple of pictures I want to show you. Can you enlarge this, please? As big as you can. Okay. This is the view looking at the volcanoes. We're coming west over the bridge. You cannot see a building anywhere near the Bosque or the drain, on either side of the bridge, okay? This is what happens when you come in now. Thank you. Okay? This is the view you see as you're coming across the bridge. This is what you will see when those buildings go in. The trees will be totally obliterated from the other side, and there's just these few on the drain that are left. This is the view as you leave the South Valley. Notice the trees. This is the Bosque over here. I'm sorry at the quality of this picture, but this is, will be the same space, two stories, three stories here. Notice the size of the car. This is strictly for scale. You will not see the Bosque if those three stories are allowed to go through. So, you're interrupting the view shed of the Bosque and the river. This project would drastically change the physicality of the entrance to the South Valley and its unique sense of place. These structures are out of character to the area and the cultural devaluation in a transitional zone. I have other things to say, but I will skip those to go right to... I have other things to say, but I will skip those to go right to the rear setback. The Isla de la Sector Plan, the Bridge Boulevard Plan, all require setbacks, both from the street and from, in this case, the ditch. So they've reduced the proper, the setback to 10 feet next to the Attrisco Riverside Drain. Wide easement on the ditch is for fire trucks and ditch cleaning operations. Building too close to the ditch is a safety issue. The ground is sugar sand and river bottom, and not stable enough for the weight of three, three-story buildings up against the Attrisco Riverside Drain. Public safety should not and cannot be waived. Comprehensive Plan, page 1 through 19, a site's environmental conditions should guide new developments' location and character. This property is next to the Rio Grande State Park, the Bosque and the river. The view shed of the Bosque and the Sandia Mountains is special. And I want to bring these up again. Okay, here we have the beach, this is central. The Riverside Drain goes underground here, but then we have a street, tingly beach, and the Bosque. So this is set, this has been brought up as saying, oh, there's a big development next to the drain and the Bosque. That is not true. This is Poco Loco down by Rio Bravo. This is Rio Bravo, down here. This is Poco Loco, and these are the lower ones, these are two-story, I believe. The really big ones are over here. Here is the drain, and here is the ditch, I mean, the Bosque. And on this property that we're discussing, the drain is right here, and they're even pushing it closer to the, the drain, and the Bosque's over here. And there's a scale if you want to measure it. But my point about the variances, all this land they bought for parking, you don't need all those variances. This plan is in violation of all four county plans, starting with the comp plan, and right on through. So I hope you consider very seriously what damage can be done if this thing goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Opponents?
I just wanted to show you real quick the existing proposed building locations compared to the existing locations. Here, we're actually farther back than what the existing buildings are, and here we are a little bit closer, seven, six, and eight, and four feet away. So we are encroaching a little bit more, but, you know, as, as the record shows, that no part of any of these approvals will allow us, or the applicant, to develop in the Bosque or river areas, that we can only develop on private property. That's, that's what we're doing. The other thing I think that's important, too, is just a quick exhibit, there, there is no access to the Bosque from our property unless you can jump the river. The parking is here and here, and that's open to the public. This is fenced off, regated off, and then that's how you access the Bosque. There is no direct access to the Bosque from our property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind putting up that map again, where you're showing the building, the site itself, and, in comparison to the existing buildings. Where's the, where's the property line there?
It's this line here.
Okay, that's the property line. And so the setback, it looks like it varies from the building, from building to building, from the property line. Is that what, is that what's going on?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley, so to be clear, yes, the footprint itself does vary-
Okay.
-relative to the property line. The closest that we are getting is 10 feet from that property line-
Okay.
...which is what we are proposing for the setback on-
Okay, versus the 15-feet requirement there?
Well, versus 25 feet, so it's a variance of 15 feet from that 25.
Oh, is it 25?
Yeah, so, again, to reillustrate the point, this would be per county zoning ordinance, by looking at Orchard Gardens Drive as the front door, and the area along the Bosque as the rear yard. We are proposing that indeed, the front door is actually along Bridge Boulevard, and that the rear yard should be adjacent to, to the property owner here. One point I would like to make is that setbacks are typically done in order to provide some space and breathing room to an adjacent property owner. In this case, along this particular property line, there's not somebody living there, somebody working there. There's a natural buffer of a ditch, there's a maintenance road on our side of the ditch, then there's a ditch, then there's a berm, and then there's the Bosque Park.
Thank you so much. We will go up to rebuttal.
It's Scott Nuland again, and I would just respond by saying that with the granting of this setback variance from 25 to 10 feet, if I'm standing on that service road by the Attrisco Drain, that, between me and where Sarah is sitting, where Sarah is sitting, there'll be a three-story building. That seems like way too close to a property line for an area like, even a service road next to the drain, which is right next to the Bosque. It's way too close. So I urge you to consider this appeal and set aside the variance granted by the zoning administrator for this landscape setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff closure?
Chairman Casada, members of the board, just to reiterate, the, the criteria for variance approval is that the subject property be peculiar, unusual, or exceptional, and that it be circumstance not found within the general vicinity. So I think it's, it is, the property is peculiar, unusual, exceptional, it does meet the criteria for variance approval. There was a comment made about the intent of setbacks, it is to create separation distances between users. The proposed layout of this property does seek to maximize separation between the nearest adjacent residential user, I mean, it does push the, the development towards an undevelopable piece of land, which is the MRGCD Drain. Minimum setbacks and separation areas are also crafted with sort of uniform properties in mind. This property being unusual, it, the variance process is specifically for this, to, to allow for reasonable flexibility in instances where there is a peculiar and unusual circumstance. So my determination was that this does meet the criteria for variance approval. I would recommend that the board deny the request for appeal and uphold the ZA and BA decisions. I'll stand for any questions, thank you.
All right, so we have any questions, any more discussion? Do I have an action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we deny the appeal and uphold the Board of Adjustment's decision.
All right, so I have a motion for denial.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is denied. Let's move on to item 5G. Staff presentation.
All right, Chairman Casada, members of the board, Nicholas Hamm again, zoning administrator for Burnley County, here presenting Agenda Item 5G. This is a request for variance of 10 feet to the minimum 15-foot landscape buffer along all streets. The property has two street frontages, as we've discussed in a number of times today. The variance that is requested will allow for the relocation of a landscape buffer to an area more beneficial to existing development. So if I could draw your attention to the exhibit here, the request for variance would affect this portion of the property along Orchard Garden. It would reduce the landscape buffer from 15 feet to 5 feet, with the intent of relocating that landscape buffer to areas adjacent to the nearest residential property user. The, the request for variance would not result in a net decrease in landscaped area on the property. It merely relocates that from the street frontage to an area that can more appropriately buffer the adjacent residential user. As I've stated a number of times, the property is peculiar, unusual, or exceptional, and the variance was granted to an extent necessary to allow reasonable use. My recommendation is that you deny the appeal and thereby uphold the determination of the Board of Adjustment and the zoning administrator. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. No questions, moving on to the appellant's presentation.
It's Scott Nuland. Here's a picture of the, where Mr. Hamm just described. Oops, here we go. That's the Orchard Gardens there. This is the, this area where there'll only be 5 feet landscape buffer along the street, and you can see these, these homes right across the street. I think these people deserve a little bit more buffer from the 94 parking spaces that are going to be across the street from them, and the big fence, which will prevent anybody from just walking across the street and going towards the river. The landscape buffer allows the development to encroach, as I indicated, without transition into the neighborhood along Orchard Gardens. This high-density development is completely out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see, it's nothing like these people and their houses here. In general, I think that the, overall, the project doesn't fit this space, this is what we've said over and over again. It is, it's a good project, affordable housing is a good idea, but it's in the wrong place. Peculiar, unusual, exceptional, it's not my piece of property, and I feel like the, the commission would make a grave error, I agree with Sarah, in allowing this project to go forward in this unusually shaped piece of property. I think there are lots of other pieces of property. In fact, the, the, one of the developers mentioned in his letter in the packet regarding this hearing, that there are two additional pieces of property further down west on Bridge that would be suitable for the exact same sort of tax credit type of development that he proposes. So I, I encourage them to go somewhere else besides this very unique piece of property to make their development. Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Opponent?
All right, so I want to be clear on the reason for the request of the reduction of the landscape buffer, okay? So to be clear, from our current property lines, right now, we have 15 feet to all footprints or, and/or parking lot, parking lot areas. However, we've been working with Public Works to look at street improvements and right-of-way improvements, including on Bridge Boulevard, including a signalized intersection, which we'll be paying for as part of our project budget, and along Orchard Gardens Drive for sidewalk, curb, gutter, other improvements which are currently lacking there. They, there's been a request from Public Works to dedicate a 10-foot strip of land on Orchard Gardens Drive specifically for those right-of-way improvements. What we are proposing is to leave our parking lot in the same location as it is right now, dedicate the remain, you know, dedicate the space that we already have for landscape to residents, and as a larger buffer along our northern property boundary, so that we could, so that we will not be, we will not be forced to lose any parking spaces or address that parking lot, because as we've already shown, it's a very difficult site to lay out a parking lot on. So we do have a landscape plan that's proposing, that's proposing street trees along Bridge Boulevard, we will have an additional landscape buffer along Orchard Gardens Drive, and it's effectively this area right here, which is what we are showing as a 10-foot setback on this drawing, that will be dedicated to Public Works, and that's why we are asking for this landscape buffer reduction. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? No, okay, moving on. Rebuttal?
On the setbacks, Bridge has not been mentioned, but though, that two-story building will be right up against the sidewalk, and in the Bridge redevelopment plan, there's a statement there that says it will act like a tunnel, and it will cause the cars to go faster. It's a very dangerous thing to have those buildings right up against the sidewalk. The other thing that has not been mentioned, this is a gated community. How are the fire trucks going to get in there and do, do, do diligence, excuse me? In the rest of the county, you have to have a way in and a way out. They don't have that. Obvious would be Orchard Gardens. That's another thing to, a safety issue. Thank you.
In closing, he's closing.
Okay, close, please.
Chairman Casada, members of the board, just to address the most immediate comment you've received, it's, this, to my knowledge, is not a gated community, it is a, is a, an open ingress and egress. There is a circulation that will be subject to approval by the Fire Department. To date, I've received no adverse comment from any public safety staff with regard to access to and from the property. This, this is a request for variance for the landscape buffer on the Orchard Garden side, so the reason I didn't address Bridge is that this request specifically doesn't have any bearing on that side of the property. So just to repeat again, the criteria for variance approval is that we demonstrate a peculiar, unusual, or exceptional circumstance. This property does meet that criteria, and I would recommend that you deny this appeal and uphold the determination of the BA and the ZA. I'll stand for any questions.
So on Orchard Gardens, on that side, that gate, is that a, can there be a, I know that we don't want traffic flowing in and out of that neighborhood, from what I've heard, but there will be, in case of an emergency, will that be a way you can get emergency vehicles onto that property?
Chairman Casada, I don't know that I can answer that with certainty, but I will say that through the commercial building permit process, that this property, should it be approved, will be subject to, the Fire Marshal will have the ability to comment and require specific improvements on this property.
All right. Any more discussion? No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I have an action on this?
I move denial of the appeal.
I have a motion for denial on 5G. Do I have a second? And a second. All in favor for the denial, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion denied. Moving on to 5D.
Chairman Casada, members of the board, Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for Burnley County, presenting now Item 5D. This is a variance of 12 feet to the maximum 26-foot building height. As was discussed previously in today's presentation, this would allow for three stories to be constructed on a portion of the property, predominantly along the MRGCD Drain. It would allow for the building mass to be located furthest from existing residential development. It will also allow for the consumption of less physical land area. The criteria for approval of variance is that a property be peculiar, unusual, or exceptional, and it can be granted to an extent necessary to allow reasonable use of the land. Through evidence in the record and testimony received through the hearing process, my determination was that this property is peculiar, unusual, and exceptional, and I would recommend in this instance that the appeal be granted, which would overturn the determination of the Board of Adjustment, and would uphold my original determination that the property is peculiar, unusual, and exceptional, which would be consistent with the previous determinations made by the Board of Adjustment and the Board of County Commissioners today. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. We'll move on to appellant's.
Hello, my name is Steve Lovato. Excuse me. My name is Steve Lovato, and I live at 132 Orchard Garden Road Southwest. I live directly north and adjacent to the proposed property development. My family has owned and occupied that property for over 80 years. I currently live there, along with my two children and grandchildren. I'd like to begin by saying I love the South Valley, I love the Bosque, and I would never support anything that would diminish its beauty and, and all that's embodied in that river area. Me and my seven brothers and sisters, we grew up playing in that Bosque. You know, that was, that was our playground, you know? And just recently, to see the existing property, all those apartments that were once thriving, well-managed, clean, that are now dilapidated, crime-infested, a nuisance property, I've had to call APD on several occasions, just because of, every apartment, apartment there, I think there's 15 or something, have all been broken into. There's needles all over the place. Just two weeks ago, the main house, which is closest to mine, was set on fire intentionally. It would have burned to the ground, but I, I called the Fire Department before it got out of hand. I was afraid it was going to catch my house on fire. before it got out of hand. I was afraid it was going to catch my house on fire. You know, so over the many, many years, just seeing that property go downhill, downhill to, to its present state, it's hard, you know, it's heart-wrenching. We've never, in those 80 years, we've never locked our back doors. And now we, we lock our doors, we live in fear. I've had to install security lighting. I have dogs. You know, I don't live comfortable anymore. And so I'm excited to see a development going up there. You know, it's been neglected for many, many years. And I'm just excited to see something being done there. I know there's many variances on the table right now, but I'd like to speak because of time for the three-story that I approve. For me personally, it's kind of selfish, but it would move the entire development furthest away from my property where I could still have some open space there and feel safe. I've met with Charles Joshlin, the developer, on many, many occasions. We've talked. He's been transparent. He's been open. He's given me tours, a tour of one of their existing properties. I was impressed. It was well-managed, cleaned, maintained, and I would love to see something like that next door to my home, you know? And after I'm gone, there's going to be my children and my grandchildren, and I would love to leave them something like that, you know, knowing that they're going to be safe. And as far as it being dark down Orchard Garden, yeah, it is, but with that big parking lot there, they're going to install downlighting, landscaping, you know? I think it's going to beautify, and because that is the entrance to the South Valley, it is now the gateway, the gateway, whatever, the gateway to the South Valley. It's much more appealing than what's there right now. I mean, I ride my bike there every day. I walk my dogs in the Bosque, and to see those apartments is scary. It's horrible, you know? So I welcome a development there.
Thank you.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Opponent?
Hello. My name is Antonio Masias, 711 Bridge. I also welcome this new development because it's going to clean up the property. It's also going to open up the space for the fire department to get through the, to the ditch because they're not going to build on the Rio Grande. It's going to be next, it's going to be on private property, and then there's a ditch before the Rio Grande River. So it's not even going to affect the view because they're, they're not going to knock down the existing trees that are in the ditch or the river. I think it's a good idea to, to make this development. Another thing that I'd like to remind the people, everybody, that on Bridge, they're, on the Bridge Plan Boulevard, on the Bridge Boulevard Plan, on that project, they're going to add parking to Bridge. So there's going to be parking spaces along all Bridge, up to five points. And I've, I've been there 15 years at the business right there on the property, and no one's ever even offered to buy this property. You know, if, if this doesn't happen, who knows how, how long, or if anybody else will come to try to develop. So it's a good idea. It's a good idea that these people are trying to do something good for the community because it's also going to bring up the, the neighborhood up in value. It's going to make it look much nicer, and it's, it is going to light it up. I have pictures. I don't know if I can show them of the way it is now. And this place is a mess right now. I've, I'm the one that cleans it, cleans it up every day. My kids play there when I'm there. I've found needles. I've found trash, poop. I've, I clean up these, I clean it up all the time, and they just keep, keep doing the same thing. Sorry. Here's another one. There's several right there. I don't know if you can see them, but it's, it's a mess. I've put locks on the back gates, and they just break them. Just a couple of weeks, we had a fire where Steve was saying. And it, it's just a matter of time where they burned down the Bosque, and it's not good for that. Another thing, it's not really affecting the neighbors because the, the only neighbors that it would affect would be Steve, and he's not opposing, he's not going against it. The ones across the street are not even here. If they were that interested, they would, they would be here trying to stop this project. But I think it's a good idea. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go to opponents, I believe.
Scott Newland, I recommend that the County Commission uphold the Board of Adjustment's decision to set aside the, deny the, the variance for the third story. Contrary to what the developer said in one of the charrettes last year regarding this development, there is a view. If I may, ma'am. This is what it looks like. Sarah pointed out, this is what it looks like now. This is what it's going to look like after they build their building. I'm just looking back to the east. It's what it looks like now. And this is what it's going to look like after they build their buildings. I respect Mr. Lovato and Mr. Masias's concerns regarding the safety of the current situation, but I suggest that it's actually, that's a function of the owners neglect of the property rather than something inherent to the property. So it's not, and I also disagree with Mr. Masias respectfully, that this may be the only thing that we get coming to the South Valley. This may be the only developer. I think there's lots of other options for this developer, as well as other people who may want to do something different. I urge the Commission to consider that there are, and, and the developer, to consider there are other ways of developing this property that would make sense for the character of the neighborhood, the entrance to the South Valley, the cultural, historical, and geographic significance of the place. So I urge, again, the Commission to uphold the Board of Adjustment setting aside and that, without a deferred. Rob?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I support everything that Scott said. We are for developing the South Valley. We do believe that there are more appropriate site options that would provide for the safety, provide for the improvement of the neighborhood for Mr. Lovato and other neighbors. The three-story option is draconian in scale. There is a, an amazing difference. If I could. This is down at Pocahoko, and this is the three-story unit and the two-story unit. We suggest that they could satisfy the project development needs with the two stories and be more in, in keeping, in honoring the unique characteristics of this piece of property. And I'd also like to bring to your attention in this appellant's letter, I quote, "There are only a couple of properties in the Bridge Boulevard corridor that have all the qualities needed to competitively score well enough for low-income housing tax credits." We believe that this is one of them. This is one of them. It's unique property, and we encourage and will support them developing their plans down the road to where it fits in with our South Valley environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
I'm getting an indication from Mr. Lovato that he is going to pass on his opportunity to rebut.
Okay. So then we'll go to staff closure.
Chairman Casada, members of the board, as Mr. Lloydhauser just accurately pointed out, this is a unique property. It's peculiar, unusual, and exceptional, and that's the criteria for a variance approval. So in light of that, my recommendation stands that this appeal be approved, thereby overturning the Board of Adjustment and upholding the original determination of the zoning administrator to allow variance to height.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions, comments? All right. Action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we uphold the, the appeal.
Move on second for an approval. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Approved. Let's move to item C, 5C.
Chairman Casada, members of the board, Nicholas Ham, zoning administrator of Burnley County, the item 5C is quite literally the exact item that you just moved and approved. My presentation would be the same. I would suggest the same thing, that this appeal be approved, thereby overturning the Board of Adjustment and upholding the zoning administrator's decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the appellant's presentation, and that's, so that's the same thing. All right. If you want to, if you have time now.
We agree with Mr. Ham. Can I just address a couple of things they said? We, we did look at a couple other properties down the west. They want $2.5 million for them and $7.25 million for them. As a nonprofit, it's not as easy as just to move shop down the street.
Okay. Thank you.
And would you like to see real pictures of what the motel looks like?
Yes.
It is not on the National Register of Historic Places.
Okay. Thank you. Opponents, would you like to?
Still standing proud. We acknowledge and obviously have to accept your, your decisions. I think you should understand that we are involved, concerned citizens. This has been some significant financial sacrifice on our part to file all of these appeals. We have spent a lot of time researching, and we feel strongly that this is a decision whose downside, unanticipated consequences have not been fully explored, and that we collectively will come to, we will come to not rue the day, but to question our decisions. This is the heart or the entrance to the South Valley. We are in deep empathy with Mr. Lovato. All of us have neighborhood issues. Mr. Newland did point out this is an issue with the property owner, not with the property, that there are other solutions. We believe that this solution was presented as a done deal, a fait accompli, and we take some exception to that. However, we are part of the system. We appreciate having the opportunity, prolonged opportunity, to contest the decisions for Mr. Lovato certainly. He's got good sense. He has our ongoing support. We hope all the upside potentials are realized, and get ready for a longer commute across the bridge because it will come because of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Casada?
Mr. Johnson.
Chairman Casada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just about to ask you the question regarding whether another vote is required on the same issue.
I think it would be, I think the vote on item C moots this one, on Mr. Lovato's appeal.
Item D.
Yes. Item D moots this one, but just for a clean record, I think it'd be helpful if, with representation from Mr. Stroger that he agrees, and afterwards if we just either had his representation to that effect or else took a vote, I think it'd be fine.
Okay.
We would certainly agree with that approach.
I would just like to say for the record, if I may, that we reach out to the community. We want them to be involved in this. This is not us and you. This is, this is together. So let's work together. We're going to have multiple design charrettes. We're going to work on the exterior of it. We're going to work on the names together. I invite you to come and just be a part of this, and let's work together on this. That's what I'm asking for your help and your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So closure?
Chairman Casada, members of the board, just like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, and members of the public on both sides of the aisle. This was a significant undertaking. I know I personally spent quite a bit of time on this project, so I want to thank, even though they may not agree with my determination, I do appreciate and encourage public input, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. No? I think we're done then.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. So, yeah, I believe that's the agenda for, that's an announcement of the next zoning meeting. It's Tuesday, March 27, 2018, zoning meeting at 2:00 PM. Yeah, like a five-minute break, I guess. We'll go right in, yeah.